Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, January 2, 2019, meeting of the Lake Havasu Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Lucas Steele.
Here.
Michael Gordon.
Here.
Doug Hardy.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
John Kindig.
Dan McGowan.
Oh, here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Don Bergen.
Yeah.
Danny White.
We have no minutes of the last meeting, so correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. We have nothing, no announcements at this time. Thank you. Other than, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everybody. May it be a good one. Okay, let's start out by, we have one vacant seat, so, Mr. Bergen, if you'd come fill our vacant seat for, for the time being, appreciate that. And let me start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only. Keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 19-1874. It's a request to rezone lots 1 and 2 of tract 2192, block 9, 2100 Kiowa Boulevard North from RM Residential Multi-Family to C2 General Commercial. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. As you said, this is property that's at 21 and 2112 Kiowa Boulevard. There are originally two properties that are combined into one.
I didn't get it.
They're on Kiowa Boulevard North, on the mountain side of the highway. They're between Runabout Drive and Amapola Drive, and the subject properties are in the middle of the block, basically. They're the two remaining multiple-family zoning properties that are being requested to be rezoned to C2. You'll notice there's some, the last of the multiple-family zoning that even fronts on Kiowa in that area is up on Amapola, and it's developed, I believe. Here's the current development in the areas. The city fire station's across the street. Again, it's all commercial, vacant. There were a couple lots down here that were zoned C2 PD that got removed from that PD, and recently, the lots to the south here were rezoned from RM to C2. And these are the two remaining lots in that area that were previously zoned, multiple-family, that are being rezoned to C2. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Back to you with any questions, thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Is the applicant present? Please come to the podium and make a, or make your presentation.
Yeah, good morning. Susanna Ballard from the Ballard Commercial Group at Brooks Clark. I'm representing the owner applicant this morning. This request is the combination of the two lots, which has been accomplished. It is now under one assessor's parcel ID number. It would just bring these two lots in the conformity with the rest of the lots along Kiowa, opening it for a C2 development.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you, Susanna, appreciate it. Okay, I'll now open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, now is the time to do it. Welcome to the podium. Anybody at all? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Staff finds the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in the appropriate sections of the city code, and based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 19-1874 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval, rezoning lots 1 and 2 of tract 2192, block 9, from RM Residential Multi-Family to C2 General Commercial. Thank you.
I presume that that is acceptable to the applicant? Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, Commissioners. Anybody at all? Mr. Still?
I will make a motion. I move to recommend approval of Land Action 19-1874, rezoning lots 1 and 2 of tract 2192, block 9, 2100 Kiowa Boulevard North, from RM Residential Multi-Family to C2 General Commercial.
I second, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Still and seconded by Mr. Hardy. He beat ya.
You can.
To approve item number 19-1874 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, the next item on today's agenda is item number ID 19-1873. It's an appeal of an approved lot line adjustment that enlarged tract 135D, block 2, lot 15, a residential property abutting the Lake Havasu Golf Course property by 4,893 square feet. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, I guess we have a couple of recusals here. Mr. Gordon, Mr. Still, you are excused for this item. Mr. Morris, would you continue?
Yes, thank you. A little background on this case, there were five properties that were recently subject to lot line adjustments in and around, around the golf course area. The subject property is the one here on Leonard Lane. There were three others that were approved, and a fourth one was approved, but then the property owners withdrew that lot line adjustment. So of the five, there's this one here on Leonard Lane that is subject of this request. All of them moved a lot line from RE property and enlarged it by adding some golf course property. This particular case is at Leonard Lane, it's the end of a cul-de-sac. Here's the existing property dimensions as it was platted, and here's what's being added per the lot line adjustment. So this property here is zoned RE, and what's been added is the golf course property that's zoned GC or golf course. This is a copy of the parcel plat map that shows, it's been a little oriented, it's been rotated a little bit, but here's the golf course property that's zoned golf course, and here's the RE property that's zoned, of course, RE, the residential property. This is the additional lot line, additional lot to be added to that property. In reviewing lot line adjustments and lot splits and lot alterations, they fall under the subdivision code, which is chapter 13 of our subdivision, title 13, and then this section. There are six criteria, review criteria, that need to be reviewed by staff to determine whether it's appropriate or inappropriate to grant a lot line adjustment in this case. This request met all six of them. The first is that the lot split or lot tie does not require creation of a new road or street. No road, no new roads or streets were created. It complies with all the applicable zoning district and general plan standards. It does, it didn't change anything. They're still zoned what they are, and it didn't change anything with the general plan. It's, needs to be served with adequate water, sewage, and street facilities and drainage. Yes, all those do still apply. And the adjoining land can be developed, or is provided access that will allow its development in accordance with the codes. Yes, those are all met. There's nothing that changes how the properties can be developed. And the last two are lots created are compatible with the lot development pattern and densities in the immediately surrounding areas. In the RE areas, there are, there's vast differences in some of the lot sizes. In this particular tract, 135D, the areas of the lots range from just about 11,500 square feet to just over 23,500 square feet. The new lot dimensions in this case will measure just over 20,000 square feet, so it falls in that range. Nothing unusual about the size or anything of it. And finally, in residential zoning districts, any accessory structures constructed, long lots enlarged, need to meet the architectural finished as, be as architecturally finished as the, the original, excuse me, as the residents at the property. Basically, if the house is stucco, the exterior of this needs to be stucco, if anything built needs to be stucco or appear to be stucco. And then, because none of those, oops, none of those were violations, they all were met per the design, excuse me, for the review criteria. During the staff review process, we determined that the proposed lot alteration met each of the six criteria, and there were no grounds for denial of that request. So with that, present, that concludes the presentation. Back to you, thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for questions of staff by Commissioners. I have one.
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Do you want to ask Ms. Ballard to come up and join the panel, since we have two openings?
Yes, I do. Ms. Ballard, would you please come up? Totally forgot about you sitting there in the civilian section of the room. We'll wait a minute for you to sign in, get situated. And then move to your, push the little red button down here, that will change your screen. Takes a second. Okay, I have a question of staff. By extending these property lines, what does that do to the setbacks for potential accessory structures?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Chairman. As we pointed out earlier, and shown in this graphic, the, the original lot, or lot setback, or, excuse me, the setbacks for the original RE lot are based on the property that's zoned RE. In this case, that original lot is zoned RE, so building setbacks are based on that. For the home itself, typically it's 25 foot front, 20 in the rear, 10 on the sides. A detached accessory structure can be as close as five feet to the side and rear property lines, but not exceed 15 feet if it's in that rear or side setback area. So that property is zoned RE. The golf course zoning, which is this shaded in area, is zoned golf course still. The, moving the lot line did not change any zonings of those properties. The portion of the property, I'm going to go back one slide, this is the way the property looked originally. Golf course zoning here, RE residential zoning there. Adding this portion, taking that property line and moving it into the golf course zoning area, does not change the area that's zoned golf course. There's a specific process to go through to rezone property, and that's handled under the zoning code, and that includes requirement of notification of property owners within 300 feet, going before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the city council. So for a lot line adjustment, we're not changing any zoning of the underlying properties. The golf course zoning, the portion that was zoned golf course, before was golf course, and new, the newly adjusted lot line will also still be golf course. So this will be one of those unusual properties that have two different zonings with it, when it's said and done. There'll be the portion that was originally zoned RE residential. The building setbacks will be based on that zoning district, if they're going to build an accessory residential use, a building or something. It would need to be based, the setbacks would be based on that RE zoning, not on the golf course zoning. In fact, golf course zoning has a 50-foot building setback from property line. So you, you could not build anything on that property that's right now, that piece that's zoned our, I mean, golf, zoned golf course, because it wouldn't meet any setbacks. And furthermore, we'd have to say that the use would have to be accessory residential use, so that you couldn't build a clubhouse, or a restaurant, or obviously anything on that RE piece, I mean, on that golf course piece, because it's part of a residential, larger overall residential property. I hope that didn't ramble too much, but that's what.
That's fine. So basically, for clarification, by doing this lot tie, if you will, all, all the owner has, has done is increase their property holdings. Because of the underlying zoning of two different districts, they can't change the setback lines until they go through a rezone of the property, a successful rezone of the property. At that point, then the setbacks could be changed or more compatible, made compatible with the RE zoning district.
That's correct. The setbacks would then be based on the property overall zoning, and if they were to rezone it to RE, and that was approved, then the new building setbacks would be based on that new RE zoning, which then would include this property that's all shaded in here, that was golf course zoning.
The application would not preclude any kind of landscaping or structure construction with regards to retaining walls or anything like that?
Right. The, those uses are allowed in both zoning districts, golf course and RE, walls, fence walls, landscaping, and things like that, yes.
Just making the clarification for the, for the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff by Commission? Okay, hearing none. Oh, Mr. Bergen?
Just for clarification, this is listed as an appeal. I'm not quite sure from your description who is appealing and why, what they want to...
And I was going to have that question also, I forgot. Thank you, Mr. Bergen.
Thank you for your question. What this was, the appeal, it came from the adjacent property, one of the adjacent property owners. The zoning administrator made an approval, a determination to approve this lot line adjustment, and the neighboring property owners were advised of the request, and they were given an opportunity to appeal in this case.
So this is an appeal generated by the neighbors?
Yes, by adjacent property owner.
Okay, that kind of raises a question to me, as to why this has not been submitted to the Board of Adjustment. There are two items that go to the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Bergen? Kelly?
Okay, just before we get off track on that, this is chapter 13 of the code, so we're under the subdivision code. So any appeal that, the appeal process outlined in this chapter is the zoning administrator makes the decision of whether to approve the lot line adjustment or not. That appeal then goes to the commission specified in this code section. So it really has nothing to do with the Board of Adjustment. It's not title 14 zoning, we're in title 13 subdivision.
Thank you, Kelly.
Let me then just quote the reason for a BOA. Hear and decide appeals when there is an alleged error in any decision, determination, order, or requirement made by the zoning administrator.
I understand, and, and we've batted back and forth the use of the term zoning administrator in title 13. We're not really sure if that's a carryover or a mistake, that it's just a person, it's just a title, but the, the function that they're performing in chapter 13 isn't, isn't necessarily on, it's not under title 14 zoning, so it's not, it's not Board of Adjustment, and it's been specifically designated to come to the commission. I can't explain exactly why, that, that's how the code was written for the chapter 13, for subdivisions. It's not a zoning application.
Okay, I thought maybe after three years that they might meet, but okay.
All right. Mr. McGowan?
I have a question. On the property, we're extending it into the golf course, will there be a fence or a structure on that property? Because the golf balls are going to get closer, if there's a structure, to the, to the play on that hole.
I'm not sure that's relevant.
Is it? Okay.
To the decision being considered here.
They can put a fence that far out.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would think they could.
The, they're allowed to develop that property as, as is allowed under the zoning district, so they could do a fence, not, not a structure, not a building in there. Any buildings would have to meet the setbacks based on the RE zoning, which is the original lot configuration before the added property, before the other property's added in, so they could do landscaping, they could do fencing, things like that. Certainly same as, would be allowed in the golf course.
Any other questions of staff by the commission? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? Hearing none, we'll take it to the...
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, can you, do you want the appellant to...
Appellant, they're the applicant, correct?
Who's objecting? No, the applicant is the, well, yeah, they're the applicant to the appeal. I'm sorry, you're right. Yes, so that person probably should come up and make a presentation.
If you'd like, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and your case.
Good morning. I'm Jerry Smansky. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm here today because I, there was a notice put next to my house that they were going to adjust the lot lines there, and I was just asking you to reconsider. I bought that house a couple years ago. I wasn't actually looking for on the golf course.
For the record, which house are we talking about?
The white house right there, that's going to be blocked.
Thank you.
And I'm a foster parent, so a couple of the kids that were so sweet with me for a couple months ended up being there for three years, and I ended up adopting them. I needed a bigger house. That was really the only house I could buy that was large enough that I could afford. I had to use my VA loan, so I had to stand at the 417 cap. And if you notice, the, the lot that you're talking about, the empty lot, is a very large lot. I think they have 185 feet of golf course on their back line, and because, I realized four other lots were approved, but they were all square lots, I'm on a cul-de-sac, and you can see I only have 80 feet of golf course, and you can see right above the pool, that little area, the little like circle, that's where the living room sits, and it faces towards where you want to extend that other lot. And it's really the only, that's a really ugly house. The only thing that was good about it is the size of it, and that that view was really nice. It looks towards the golf course, it's really pretty. And I realize at this point, this is the first step for them to be able to adjust the lot lines, to be able to build back there, and that's going to destroy my view. So I was just, and I realize I'm going against two very influential investors, but I already own the house, I'm a father, I have six kids, that's, you know, you're going to destroy my property value, and there's going to be a big, you know, I realize there's going to be a house there, built, and it's going to be a big house, because it's a beautiful lot. But when you extend that out, that, you're going to push everything back towards the golf course, I'm going to be looking at a house for my living room instead of the golf course. And then they're going to have to put up one of those fences, because the golf balls do hit over there, so they'll, in order to protect the property, they're going to put up one of those big screens, which will further block, maybe you'll destroy my property. And I'm just asking you to reconsider. And I realize at this time, that this is just, but this would be the first step for them to eventually build a house back that far onto the golf course. That's it. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the speaker, the applicant? I have some, if nobody does. First off, I'd like to address your statement about the influential investors. That means nothing to us here.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay? We look at this based on the merit of the zoning and the merit of the application, or the appeal in this particular case. And that's all I have to say about that. Anybody else, questions of the applicant? Thank you very much, Mr. Smansky.
All right, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, and it is open to any comments, either pro or con. If you'd like to come forward at this time, now is the time to do it. Please state your name for the record.
Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. I was the original applicant that submitted the application in the city. Morning Chair, morning Commissioners. Just wanted to point out a, one issue on, on the property here. We were trying to keep the neighbors' view intact. If you look at the lot line that we have proposed there, instead of running straight down the lot line and extending it straight back along how the property would extend, there's a 45-degree cut across that side right there, where it allows that to still remain open, to be seen all the way out to the green out there. So we took that into consideration and made that 45-degree cut, instead of extending it straight out. That way, if the future land does ever get rezoned or anything like that, that protects that corner of the adjoining property. And that's all I've got to say.
Any questions of the speaker? Anybody at all? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, Chairman.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con? Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting, or of this item, and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners. During the review process, staff determined that proposed lot line alteration met each of the six review criteria, and there are no grounds for denial of the request. Staff recommends the commission uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the lot alteration. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for any questions or commentary, or a motion. Mr. Nelson?
Just discussion.
That's fine.
Obviously, I think the, the appellant and is concerned that, you know, this is going to be, this lot line is approved, or it's already approved, and that there will be a rezone in the future to, resume it, rezone it to RE, and then, obviously, you can build structures and everything back there. And just wanted to open that discussion and see if, if the committee had any concerns there.
If I may, I will address that. I think that this particular application does have merit. The adjacent property owner can do the exact same thing, should he choose, to purchase that same amount of property that runs along the back of his. At this point, there is no consideration for a rezone, so that's not even a consideration or an issue here. And if somebody does, if this applicant, excuse me, if this property owner does go for a rezone down the road, that would be the time to probably protest and, and rise up against it. As far as, at this point, we're not allowing it, allowing the property owner to adjust lot lines, excuse me, adjust setbacks or anything like that. So there's no chance of, of encroachment on view at this point with a structure. So I don't see any problem with going forward with this. If it does come for a rezone, that's the time to make the case.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
That's, that's my opinion.
And I agree.
Anybody else? Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Anybody? I can't make a motion.
I move to uphold the zoning administrator's approval of item ID number 19-1873 with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion to approve...
I second the motion.
ID 19-1873 by Mr. Nelson, and we have a second by Mr. McGowan. Any further discussion on the issue?
This is then a denial of the appeal.
Mr. Bergen, what's your question?
This is a denial of the appeal.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's a vote against, okay.
It's a vote to maintain the original decision to allow the addition of the property.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Kelly? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes. Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is none. It's the call to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on any item whatsoever and address the commission, now is the time to do it. We may not respond, but we can hear your, your comments. Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The meeting scheduled for January 16th has been canceled. The next regular scheduled, scheduled meeting will be February 6th. I don't recall whether there's items for that or not at this point. Of course, we will let you know if it's indeed canceled. Thank you.
All right. Concluding our business, we stand adjourned.